Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mark Cogler, the Planning Commission Chair, and I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission Meeting of June 22, 2021. As part of our practice of calling the meeting to order, we read some exciting information about the Ralph M. Brown Act, and if the information in the paper was accurate, as I trust it was, this might be the last time I'm reading this, so hang on and enjoy for a minute. Please note that due to the COVID-19 emergency and in compliance with the state and county shelter-at-home orders and is allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act, Planning Commission meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. A video stream of Planning Commission meeting presentations will be livestreamed and available play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: wwwprcity.com/youtube. Rather than attending in person, project applicants and members of the public must call 805-865-7276 to participate via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting at 6:30 p.m., or written comments can be submitted via email to planning@prcity.com. Written comments received prior to noon on the day of the meeting will be posted as an addendum to the agenda online at wwwprcity.com/AgendaCenter/Planning-Commission-5. That's the number five. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item. With that out of the way, we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Commissioner Christiansen here with us tonight? I don't even notice such. Commissioner Neal, I would ask that maybe you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please.
Of course. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have the roll call, please, from staff. Commissioner Gibson?
Present.
Commissioner Neal?
Here.
Commissioner Jorgensen? Commissioner Christensen?
And Chairperson Cogler?
Here.
Let the record show that Commissioners Covarubias and Davis had given us previous indication they would be absent tonight. Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Could we have staff introductions, please? Darren Nash, city planner, and with me tonight I have Ashley Peterson, Jessica Ferguson, David Athie, Katie Bannister, and Warren Frase, and Karen Jackson. Very good. Thank you, Darren. General public comments regarding matters not on the agenda. I don't see any in the Word document. Are there any, Jessica, that are there?
No, sir, there are not.
Very good. Thank you. Then we'll move on to Item F, Agenda Items Proposed to Be Tabled or Rescheduled. Do we have any of those? There are none. Great. Thank you. We will move then into Item Number G of the agenda, which is the Public Hearing section of the agenda. There's one this evening. It's for the Development Plan for JWC Welding, PD 20-18/P20-0088. The project is at 2931 American Way, APN 025-434-010, and the applicant is John Wright. If we may, let's start this off with the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairperson Cogler. So as you said, this is a development plan for JWC Welding located at 2931 American Way. Next slide, please. So this is a location map showing the location of the site. So this is just to the west of the municipal airport, which is North Adry Creek Road along Airport Road. You can see a little yellow star there. Next slide. So here's some images of the site. At the top, you see the actual site. It's just to the, I believe that telephone pole is in the northeast corner of the site, and you can see Wyman Construction, which is in the rear. And then at the bottom, you see a couple of images collaged together, which shows what exists across the street on Airport Road across from American Way. Next slide. So this Planning Commission approved a parcel map back in 2018 for this site. This was previously one large site subdivided into four parcels. You can advance it when it'll put up an animation. So tonight, we're discussing the development for parcel three. Advance again. So previously, the Planning Commission did approve a planning, excuse me, a plan development for Wyman's Construction, which was on parcel one at the rear of the site. In addition, advance again. Last year, the Planning Commission approved a development plan for All About Events on parcel four, which is to the south of the parcel we're going to discuss this evening. So again, parcel three, and advance again. And so you can see the site plan here superimposed. You can see how the three buildings are going to work together. We have not had any proposed development for parcel two at this time, but we do now see how the three buildings would work together. You can see American Way runs along between All About Events and this proposed JWC Welding, leading back to those two parcels in the rear. We do also have a very conceptual plan that the city has had a view of the development to the north of this site. There is a very large wine distribution, a winery, wine making and wine distribution building tentatively proposed to the north of the site. It would include a driveway that runs along the north side of this property and would interact pretty well with how this site is designed. So here are the two projects I just mentioned. At the bottom, you can see Wyman's Construction. That's an existing project, a metal building with kind of an agrarian style. This is at the rear of the subdivision, and the applicant was allowed to use or has some chain link fence with slats. And then at the top, you see there's the conceptual or the approved design for All About Events, which is next door to the site we're looking at this evening. Next slide. So here's a closer look at the site plan. Karen, if you'd advance one. So in the orange, you can see where the proposed building would be located. This is just under 12,000 square feet. Advance. This area in the salmon color is an existing building that the applicant owns and would like to use on the site. And so this portion of the building is somewhat set. The design of it is hard to change as far as roof slopes and general appearance. The siding and so forth is new, but the existing structure is existing, not on the site yet, but it is an existing building that's in pieces that the applicant owns. The portion to the right is an addition that puts, adds kind of a human scale to the building and has a pedestrian entrance. Those are primarily offices there. Advance, please. So this area in the yellow color is the area that's proposed to be paved. You can see towards the front of the site, there's some asphalt paving that leads to some parking spaces adjacent to the building. And then there is some concrete to the south of the building that would be a parking area. There are 24 parking spaces proposed, which would park this site for a manufacturing use. In the rear of the site, if you want to advance, there is chain link fence with slats proposed behind the building. This area in the blue would be where that chain link fence would be located, but you would also have a gravel or DG yard back in that area. The applicant has a welding business and would have some outdoor storage. Advance, please. And then in addition, along the exterior of the parking area, there would be wrought iron fence, a more decorative fencing along the front. And there are conditions of approval that require that more decorative fence be used within 200 feet of Airport Road, and the chain link fence could be used in that rear portion of the property. Advance. So here's a quick peek at what the building looks like. This is a metal building. The applicant has provided, like I said, a human scale office front to the building. This is an agrarian style metal building, has some features that make it look a bit more like a barn than an industrial style building. The applicant has, the DRC reviewed this project multiple times, and if we advance the slide, excuse me. This is just to give you a point of reference. The applicant, this was the first building that was presented to the DRC, and the DRC, in both instances, made some significant comments that the applicant has responded to. And so you see a significantly altered site plan from what was originally proposed, and the building has been, there have been some significant improvements to the building. Next slide. So now moving into the elevations. This is the front elevation of the building. This is a metal building, as we stated, and the applicant is proposing a sign in the front of the office building. Next slide. Here are the long side elevations. At the top, you see what would be viewed from the north. This side of the building is only three feet from the property line, and so there are some trellises with some vining plants proposed up the side to provide some vertical change to the building. There's some windows added and some contrast striping, as well as a wainscoting along the bottom of the building. Along the parking area, you can see there are some roll-up doors with awnings proposed over the roll-up doors. The roll-up doors are proposed in a very bright red color, give it a nice contrast to the gray that's used elsewhere on the building. Next slide. So looking at those colors and materials, you can see that red, those red roll-up doors. There's also some additional red. The posts at the front of the building are proposed in a red color. Looking at the list of proposed materials, you've got, of course, the metal siding. There's a light gray for the majority of the big part of the building. There's some darker gray colors used on the smaller office portion. As I stated, there's a wainscoting that's a smooth painted concrete in a gray color, and then there is a darker gray stripe along the, near the top of the building. Next slide. So here's some additional perspectives that show you different images of the building. Again, you can see the chain link fence at the rear of the property, the parking area towards the front, some landscaping between Airport Road and the building, and then some additional landscaping along Airport Road as well with some shade trees. Next slide. Here's a perspective. We would be looking to the northeast, so the airport would be in the background of this, the Airport Road in the background there as well. You can see those red roll-up doors landscaping along American Way. Next slide. Finally, this is another perspective. This would be looking southeast, and you can see the rear of the building is less ornate. The roll-up door is just a gray color, and you can see that large yard where the applicant would store items. Next slide. So the applicant has provided a landscape plan. It's a fairly simple plan. There's three different small landscaping plants. You've got the mat rush, which is kind of a bunch of grass, and the red hot pokers that we see around town, and then Cleveland sage. In addition, there are some live oak and arbutus or strawberry trees along the front of the property. The applicant is also showing arbutus trees in the parking area. There's some shade trees there. There is a condition of approval that requires more trees along the southern property line here along American Way. Those are arbutus trees. They get big, but not huge, so the condition reads that those should be at a 30-foot interval, about 60 feet is what you see there in the plan. Next slide. There's some images of the trees, or the plants that are proposed for use. You can see the red hot poker and the mat rush on the left with the sage, and then the different tree varieties that are proposed. Next slide. So there are a number of conditions of approval. Here's some highlights. The conditions do include a requirement that any outdoor storage must be behind the rear wall of the building. So any of the welding materials would need to be at the rear of the property, far away from Airport Road. As I mentioned, shade trees should be at a 30-foot center along American Way. And I do also have an amendment proposed, and we'll see that in a slide or two from here, that those shade trees do continue along the full length of American Way on the property. Currently, they're shown in the perspectives only going basically along the parking area. Condition number 13 would require wrought iron fence within 200 feet of Airport Road and would allow the slot, the chain link fence with slats to the rear of the property. There is a condition number 14, if the Planning Commission wants to discuss. The condition would allow parking spaces proposed with an American Way to count towards the onsite requirement, just as we allowed for All About Events. The applicant hasn't necessarily requested that. They aren't showing proper access, as far as I understand, but if they were to address the access issue, the condition reads that they could count those parking spaces. There is some outlying Kipox mitigation that was resultant from the parcel map that still needs to be addressed, and so there's a condition that requires the applicant to work with California Fish and Wildlife to address that Kipox mitigation. And then finally, there is a condition related to stormwater. The city engineer needs to see some changes to the stormwater control plan that can be addressed during the building permit process. Next slide. So there are a host of findings that are included in your resolution. Some of the more pertinent are the fact that the project would be, so the Planning Commission would be making these findings this evening, that the project is consistent with the general plan, with the zoning ordinance, with the airport land use plan, and with the industrial design guidelines. Planning Commission would be finding that the project is compatible with the surrounding land uses and that it provides appropriate visual appearance. The applicant, excuse me, the project, no, the Planning Commission would also be finding that the project is designed to be sensitive to and to blend in with the character of the site and the surrounding area. Next slide. So staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a Resolution A, which would approve Plan Development 20-18. If you'll advance, there is an amendment proposed to condition of approval number seven, as I mentioned earlier. So in blue, you can see the words that staff is recommending be added. So it would be that shade trees shall be planted on the property along the entire length of American Way at an interval of no more than 30 feet on center. As always, the Planning Commission does have additional options, which include adding additional amendments to the draft resolution for approval this evening. The Planning Commission could refer the project back to their staff or to the DRC to work out additional details. Finally, the Planning Commission could deny the project. They would need to make specific findings of denial if that was the intended action this evening. And I believe that's the last slide. Yeah. So that is the end of staff's report. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. That's well done and very thorough.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
It's Warren. I note that Commissioner Christiansen has arrived. Can we just confirm that he's now in the meeting?
Yes, Christiansen's present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Good catch, Warren, because I hadn't noticed that. Okay. At this point in time, typically, we ask the commissions if they have any questions of staff, and we'll kind of run down the line and do that. Let's start with Commissioner Gibson. Do you have any questions of staff?
No, I have no questions at this time. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Jorgensen, any questions?
No questions.
Very good. Commissioner Neal, any questions?
No questions.
All right. Commissioner Christiansen, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one in regards to the amendment for the shade trees. Was that, was that amendment from staff? Or can you explain that a little bit more for me?
Yes, that is a staff recommendation. There is an existing condition number seven that requires the trees to be more closely spaced. But as I was putting my presentation together today, I noticed that the trees did not continue along the length of American Way. So the recommendation is that that condition be amended to require trees along the whole length.
Okay, so what they have now are arbutus trees along that edge. Is that correct?
Yes, they are. There are some arbutus trees proposed. The condition basically requires more trees.
Gotcha. So that has to go further down American Way with trees. Okay. Thanks for explaining that.
Okay, very good. And I have no questions at this time. So I would open the public hearing and see if there are comments. And I think as a part of a comment period, I would ask the applicant and/or their design representatives if they have any information they would like to present to the commission.
This is John Wright, applicant. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John.
Okay. I don't really think I have anything to add. JV is not at the meeting, obviously. My only concern, well, I guess my only concern would be the amount of trees, but I guess if that's what we need to do, then that's what we need to do. Because that was never brought up, I don't believe, at the DRC.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
This is JV. I am present, and I was just going to address, I was out of town very close to this meeting, so I wasn't sure if I was going to make it. But I did go ahead and resend an email today to David Athie, addressing his concerns on the stormwater control plan. And obviously, that, we can work through that. We've seen as the project next door, All About Events, has much more of a coverage of the lot as far as the previous area, and it's definitely a possibility to deal with the stormwater on the lot. It's the same size, and we just have a little bit different way of dealing with it, and we have a lot less to deal with. So we went ahead and took care of that, and I sent that in today. So he'll be able to review that at his leisure.
Okay. Any other comments by the owner? Otherwise, we'll move into public comments. I don't believe, Jessica, there were any.
That is correct. There are not.
Okay. Since we have no one who wishes to speak, or any additional parties that wish to speak on this, we will close the public hearing and turn this back to the Planning Commission. Discussion by the commission. Let's go in reverse order. Commissioner
I'm not sure I have any questions right now. I mean, I guess I am, Katie explained the trees. That was added recently, it sounds like. But it was something that was a part of the original plan, developed the plan there, is my understanding. Is that correct, Katie?
So the plan that has been reviewed before, the intention of staff was always that trees would run along all of American Way, and I believe I misread the plans in the past. So the intention of the condition is to make sure that that's reflected. It does appear that the applicant has some discomfort with that number of trees. The municipal code does require landscaping along property edges and along parking lots to provide shade, and so that's definitely the intention of staff is to provide screening for the materials that'll be stored in the rear and to provide shade for the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I remember, I don't remember it coming up at DRC either. Other than that, I think it's a great building. I was there at DRC, and I like it. I like that they add some additional landscaping there. I don't have any other questions right now.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Neal, any discussion points?
None, other than it looks like the planning simple or the planning legend has been a 48-inch box. It will make it a little palatable to the applicant. If we reduce that to maybe a 24-inch box along by finally.
Chairperson, I got about like half of.
Yes, I was just going to raise that. Commissioner Neal, for some reason, we have an echo associated with your voice, and it makes it difficult to understand.
I think it may be JV. He's still got his mic on.
That would be helpful if everybody would close microphones except the speaker, because right now, we can hear you much better, Commissioner Neal. If you would, please repeat what you just said.
So I said that with the addition of the trees along American Way, the only arbutus shown on the landscape plan is a 48-inch box. And my idea was to maybe make it a little more palatable to the applicant is to reduce that size to 24-inch box along American Way. That was it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. We can take that up at the time that there is a motion offered on this to clarify that. Commissioner Jorgensen, any discussion points?
No, no comment, no discussion at this point.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Gibson?
I would just, my only comment would be that I would support staff's recommendation on Item Number Seven towards having more trees along American Way, just in recognition that Airport Road is a major arterial road, and just knowing or anticipating some of the projects and what's going to be happening probably in the near future, that I think that the trees, for me, acts as more of a screening from the large wall of the building, as well as helps hide the chain link fence, which we generally have an inversion for. So I would support staff's recommendation on that. That would be my only comment. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. And like others, I was on the DRC at least the second time this came forward, so I'm pretty familiar with it. I would also support the installation of trees along American Way, and I would certainly be open to Commissioner Neal's suggestion of going with a smaller plant material overall, if that kind of mitigated a little bit the cost of the extension. But I think the trees are essential along American Way. Any other discussion points by the commission before we see if anybody would like to put forward a motion? Hearing none. We are looking for a draft resolution, and I think in the packet, it was labeled as attachment two on page 15. The only thing I think has been discussed so far is the extension specifically of the trees along American Way and the size characteristic of those trees. Anybody care to offer a motion?
Chairperson Cogler, I will give it a whirl.
Yes, Commissioner Neal, please do.
I move that we approve, that we adopt Draft Resolution A, approving Plan Development 20-18, including changes to site-specific conditions of approval number seven. Shade trees shall be the entire length of American Way at 30-foot intervals, substituting the 48-inch box as shown with the 24-inch box material.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Commissioner Christiansen seconded it.
Motion from Neal, seconded by Christiansen. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I'll ask staff to please call the roll. Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
And Chairperson Cogler? Motion passes 5-0. Very good. Thank you. That was the only public hearing for this evening, so we can move into Item H, which are discussion items. I don't believe we're any noted on the agenda specifically. Do we have a discussion items by staff? There are none. Very good. Thank you. We'll move into Item I, the Consent Calendar. We have Development Review Committee minutes from meetings of May 10, 17, and 24, June 7, and June 14, and Planning Commission minutes for May 25. Are there any comments, changes to any of those, and/or a motion for approval?
Chairperson Cogler, this is Commissioner Gibson. I move approval of the consent calendar, which includes the Development Review Committee minutes for May 10, May 17, May 24, June 7, June 14, and the Planning Commission minutes for May 25.
A motion from Commissioner Gibson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jorgensen. Please call the roll. Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
And Chairperson Cogler? So that motion carries unanimously. Item J on our agenda, other reports. We do have a few. I'll turn it back to staff to review those, if you would, please.
Yeah, I'll take this one, Darren. So Warren Frase, Community Development Director, the housing constraints, an opportunity committee status report, along with the zoning code update are moving forward. along with the zoning code update are moving forward. The city has awarded a contract to MIG to prepare the zoning code update. Uh, we're just getting kind of oriented with them right now. We expect to report back to the Planning Commission, the Housing Constraints Committee, probably early this summer, um, and start to work out the uh work plan for the remainder of the year on those two items.
Okay, any questions at all on, on that item of staff? If not, please give us an update on Railroad Street.
Yeah, so the Railroad Ad hoc Committee has met twice now. Uh, we had the first meeting was basically a virtual meeting. The second meeting was a walking uh meeting of the corridor. Um, so we've gathered up um some pretty good information about existing conditions. We're looking to schedule a follow-up meeting in July. Um, we're looking, we were going to cancel the Planning Commission meeting the week of July twenty-seventh uh due to the fair. Um, but that might be a good week for a follow-up meeting for the Railroad Ad hoc. So I'll look for any direction on whether that would be a good week to schedule the next meeting.
Okay. You have the Ad hoc Committee pretty much present tonight. Um, if you don't mind, Warren, if you would talk about maybe just briefly the rotation schedule for DRC, make sure that's in order with everybody, and maybe some of us can check our calendars in the meantime for the week of July twenty-seventh, and we can take care of that right now.
Um, this, this is Commissioner Christensen. I, I had a quick question. For, on the Railroad Ad hoc Committee, I wasn't here for the walkthrough at a family um situation, but um were, were there notes from that, Warren, that can be shared that I could, that I could see what was discussed? On the walkthrough?
Yeah, let's see, Katie, did, did you keep any actual notes on that?
I did check in with the city clerk whether or not we needed to prepare minutes for an ad hoc committee meeting. And I was told that the idea was that the members would uh report out to the, to the whoever they report to. So I, you know, it might be appropriate for the members, the other members who were in attendance to report out, but there were no official minutes.
Okay.
That would that would fall to Commissioner Jorgensen and myself as to uh some comments on what we saw and observed. And I say, the thing about being chair is, Commissioner Jorgensen, I could say you go first.
Okay. Um, it was a very good effort, exercise, I think, for all of us to walk the, the street and uh the adjacent across the streets and really see firsthand the opportunities we have there, which we all agreed were pretty extensive with challenges. There are discon, there's one area in particular where there's a discontinuous sidewalk, but one of the projects that is um underway that will be um redeveloping the lush limousine into a uh brewery will complete the um street improvements along that area. So that will make it, it kind of as a first step, at least it'll be pedestrian friendly on both sides of the street. Um, the, we noted that there is already a small artist studio that has moved in. Um, so the, the neighborhood is changing whether the Ad hoc Committee does its work or not, and so it was encouraging, but it also, I think, kind of told us that we need to make some, some um recommendations as soon as possible. So we talked about ways to uh deal with street trees. Some of those existing are, are not appropriate or not particularly healthy. Paving opportunities, um uh pavers uh that have been, have been used. Some other places downtown might be appropriate. No decisions were made, but we talked about um opportunities and options. Um, we also discussed the narrow sort of corridor pedestrian alleyway that um goes over through to um Pine and that that was really looked like an opportunity to be a fun place, possibly with a, a mural or a series of murals, um, some bright colors and, and um something that would encourage connection, pedestrian connection from downtown and from the park um through at, at mid-block onto Railroad. And um north of um thirteenth, the um and fourteenth, um, it really is already starting to, has, has had a lot of development occur already. And the committee was thinking that we would really focus our attention on uh the single block. And uh, it's a relationship to downtown. We talked about the potential for one-way traffic, different ideas for par, keeping parallel parking, uh, the issues associated with diagonal parking and, you know, the pros and cons of one-way versus two-way uh traffic and the um what that, how that affects not only the parking count, but also the pedestrian experience. So it was, it was a good, open, open-ended conversation. Um, the, the point not being to make decisions, but to introduce a lot of things for us to think about and then um try and compile that into some usable design guidelines for those who will be bringing projects into that part of town.
Thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen. That was great. Appreciate that.
And I thank you as well. I don't think minutes could have captured the summary as well as you just did. That's excellent recall. Uh, I think we did find it to be very valuable to be kind of on the street, kicking the curbs and looking around. I think it gave us a little different perspective. And I think it was helpful to see what has happened, and I think if anything, it probably builds excitement for what can happen in the future in that corridor, because it's got great potential. Um, so, so if we were to choose a date for the next meeting sometime, the week of July twenty-six, is that what you indicated, Warren? Do you have a, any dates in mind that may work on your end for starters?
Um, I'm looking at probably the morning of Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. It's wide open, and usually the mornings are better than the afternoons in terms of temperature if we end up going outside again. Or we could probably fit you in anytime in the afternoon on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh.
Um, I could not do the afternoon of the twenty-seventh, but anytime on the twenty-eighth works for me.
Okay.
And I likewise could do, I think you mentioned morning on the twenty-eighth. I could certainly do that.
All right. I'm open on, yeah, I'm open on the twenty-eighth, so I could do anytime during the twenty-eighth.
Want to say ten AM?
Works for me.
Um, sure, that sounds fine. Are we gonna be in City Hall or back at the side?
Sounds good.
Let's, let's plan to be in City Hall, so I think we'll probably meet in the large conference room.
All right.
And we'll issue an agenda, so everybody knows.
Thank you. Any changes at all to the DRC rotation schedule? We've tweaked this a little bit as we've gone, and does anybody have a conflict that's arisen where they need somebody to cover?
Um, Commissioner Cogler, this is Commissioner Gibson. I actually am going to be out of town on September thirteenth. So if I could get somebody to cover for me, I, I certainly would appreciate it.
I'd be happy. This is Commissioner Neal.
Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Okay, any others that anybody knows of at the moment? If not, that schedule will stand and we'll tweak it monthly as we need to, because people's plans obviously change a bit over time. Okay, um, we are ready for item K, which are comments from the Planning Commission. Um, Commissioner Gibson, do you have comments you would like to offer?
Um, just one, and it, something that Warren had notified us. Um, I, I had actually found out that um Leo Castillo's ten-year-old son, Logan, was, uh, had stage four cancer uh sometime last week. It just kind of hit a Instagram feed. Um, other, I had not known before that, and I had, I attempted to reach out to him, but of course, you know, he was busy taking care of his, his son and his family, but uh, as all of you, I'm sure, um, I just want to ex, express, um, you know, how heartbreaking I find that to be. I guess the perspective is that as, as we go through life and all of us get a little older, you know, if we're blessed with having loved ones and um friends that uh we're going to be faced with this um more and more, uh, the more blessed we are, the, the more we face this, but it's still a tragedy, and somehow it just seems tragic when somebody's so young. So I just, I just wanted to echo what some of you had said in, in your email. It's uh my heart and prayers go out to Leo and his family.
Thank you. We did have a brief statement planned at the beginning or at the end of the meeting tonight, but if any commissioners would like to offer comments in lieu of doing that, that's fine as well. Commissioner Jorgensen, any comments?
Uh, no, I don't think I have any comments. I think Commissioner Gibson's words were um fully well-stated, so I, I will let him um have a final word on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Neal?
I too would like to join in um Commissioners, the Commissioner to in um voicing my um sympathy for the Castillo family.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Christensen?
Thank you. I would just echo his comments, Commissioner Gibson's comments. I, I noted that in an email that my, our, our hearts uh and prayers go out to that, their family. So thank you very much.
Very good. Um, those of us that worked with Commissioner Castillo over a few years, I think, got to know him. We got to know certain members of his family as well. His daughter was a, a relative uh consistent force in attendance at some of the meetings at City Hall and other things. And I think it, it's evident to those that knew him that um I don't know that, that really there are any more parents uh that are more dedicated than they were to their children. And this is a extremely hard loss for all of us, and I would just like to state that I think members of this planning commission certainly offer our love and support to the family. And we join literally hundreds of members of the Paso Robles community who I think stand ready to assist them in any way. Uh, this is a very difficult time, and we're there for them, I believe, and I firmly do believe in the weeks and months that lie ahead, so. Uh, as was voiced earlier, and thank you for putting up that graphic, um, our thoughts and prayers are with the Castillo family. And I thank my fellow commissioners for all of their kind words as well, and there will be more, I know, as, as this community goes forward and helps them address this. So, thank you. I think that's all of the uh planning commissioner staff or planning commissioners' comments. Do staff have comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think, you know, staff echoes the same sentiments. Um, you know, Leo was a great commissioner, good friend, outstanding member of the community. It's just heartbreaking that this has happened, so our thoughts are with Leo and his wife, um, Katie. Logan had a twin, um, Laney, and then a younger brother, Noah, as well. Um, so there is a service um on Thursday, River Star Vineyards, and there is also a GoFundMe page available for those that want to uh make any donations, so. Um, yeah, we're just, you know, really heartbroken by this, and um we're, we're hoping that we all pull together and be there for Leo as much as possible. Moving on, um, we have a couple other announcements. In attendance tonight with us is Elizabeth Hall. She is our new um interim city attorney, so she replaced Kimberly Hood. Um, she's uh works at BBK just like Kimberly, so we have the same overall attorney's office. Um, but Elizabeth is our um new assigned representative, so Elizabeth, um, you'll see her around, um, here at meetings. And then her um basically uh second-in-command, her partner, is Isaac Rosen. So Isaac will probably be attending most of the Planning Commission meetings. Uh, we do, as we move forward with reopening, uh, we're going to continue to have hybrid meetings. So we'll continue to have the availability for um Elizabeth and Isaac to basically attend remotely, and that's probably the format on that we'll primarily um see them in, in that they're both located down in Southern California. Uh, moving on to the reopening, as you may have seen, um, the city announced that the city council will be going back to in-person meetings. Their first meeting will be July eighth, which is a Thursday, uh, due to the Fourth of July being close to Tuesday. So starting in July, back to in-person meetings, so the Planning Commission will have an in-person meeting on July thirteenth. So we'll be doing that. Um, then the next meeting, which is July twenty-seventh, normally, we're going to skip that one. That is the uh week of the Midstate Fair. And then, let's see, a couple project updates, things that are going on. Um, the Boys School Project, also known as the Landing, has uh been basically authorized by the city council to move forward with the general plan amendment. Um, we know we were already started on the EIR, uh, but we did need to basically get the uh council's uh conformance and concurrence on moving forward with the whole project, so we had a five oh vote on that. If you didn't see the uh council presentation from the applicant, um, it, it was very thorough. Provided a lot of additional information on the project. Um, so you can either, you know, watch the council presentation on YouTube, or we can provide you copies of kind of the slide deck that the applicant um put together, but there's a lot of good information in there. You know, one of the next steps will be to bring the project back for DRC review, so we'll be looking at dates for that. We also have to go to the Airport Commission um to brief them on the project as well. So it looks like in terms of upcoming projects on your July thirteenth calendar, probably have a CUP for a wine bar. Looks like there's a small industrial project in parcel map on the thirteenth. Moving into August, a couple industrial projects, zoning code update. Hotel Paso Robles is a hotel on Fourteenth and Pine Street. Uh, we're looking at that for an August date as well. And then, let's see, finally, the Paso Robles Gateway Annexation Project, that'll be on the next council agenda again. The commission and council approved that annexation and general plan amendment last year. We then submitted it to LAFCO uh for consideration. One of the requirements when we annex a piece of property, basically transfers from the county into the city's jurisdiction, we had to work out with the county a agreement to share the property tax uh moving forward. And we weren't able to actually come to an agreement with the county during the required time period. So that LAFCO has basically withdrawn our application, and we now need to resubmit and provide a, basically an outline to LAFCO in terms of how we're gonna reconcile the tax share um issue. So that's going to be on the next council agenda um for council consideration and direction. Hopefully, we get uh some direction where we can move forward with that annexation and, and keep that project moving along. So I think those are my main items to report, and I don't know, Darren or Dave, anything else you want to add tonight?
Nothing to add from Darren tonight.
Hi, this is David. I just have some good news for the Planning Commission. Several years ago, uh, River Oaks Two was approved by the Planning Commission, the final map or the track map, created two hundred and seventy uh plus uh units out there, and they just recorded their first track map of seventy-three lots. So they're moving forward, and I found out from the uh applicant today, Dennis Maresco, who now owns um Phase One, that they've sold their first three houses, and they're also starting on their um model homes. So it goes, a little bit of good news uh from the housing front, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Very good. If there are no other staff reports, staff.
This is just Elizabeth Hall. I just wanted to uh, to say hello. I am on the line. Uh, thank you, Warren, for the introduction. Uh, and just let you know that uh myself and Isaac will be available to you, and we're looking forward to working with the city and the planning commission.
We look forward to having you join us, and we'll try to be able to have you keep us out of trouble, so.
Do our best.
I'm sure you will. Welcome. We look forward to interacting with you as time goes on here. Any other items of note for this very short agenda this evening? We've been kind of on a string of these shorter meetings, and I always think we should enjoy those while we can, because I know we will make up for it later in the year. If there are no other. If there are no other comments, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Jorgensen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gibson, a voice acclamation vote would be fine. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are done, thank you. We will see you next time at City Hall.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night, all.
Night.